Good evening, everybody. I'll call our meeting, our regular city council meeting of August 10th, 2020 to order. The first item in our agenda is if you could please all put your camera on and unmute your speaker and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States.
America.
America.
The republic.
To the republic.
To the stand.
Under God.
Indivisible, legitimate.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, everybody, for joining us in the pledge of allegiance. The next item is the open forum. I'd like to ask staff if anybody is called, has called in or submitted any questions for the open forum.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Kelly. I'm the senior office assistant, and we have not had any calls or emails for the open forum. Just like to remind residents that if you would like to submit comments prior to the meetings, you can do so to myself. You can email me at kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. You can also call my office line at 612-861-9711. If you would like to participate during our live meetings, we do have the open forum line open. You can call. The line is 612-861-0651. And so we will take calls during our open forum portion of the meeting. Thanks.
Great, and I'm just gonna wait for a little bit to just make sure nobody will call in, and then we can move to the next item. Okay, seeing as we have nobody here for the open forum, I will move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the Joint City Council HRA Planning Commission Work Session of July 20th, 2020. The City Council Work Session of July 28th, 2020, and the City Council Meeting of July 20th, 2020.
This is council member Supple. I'll move approval.
Council member Whelan, I'll second.
Could you say that again, council member Whelan? We weren't able to hear you.
Uh, council member Whelan, I'll second.
Thank you. The minutes have been, uh, the motion has been made by council member Supple and the second by council member Whelan. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Council member Supple.
Aye.
Council member Troutman.
Aye.
Council member Garcia.
Aye.
Council member Whelan.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved. The next item is a really exciting presentation for, to proclaim the month of August 2020 in celebration of the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment in the city of Richfield. So what I'll do, we have, um, we have Susan Rosenberg and Heather Eastland here with us to receive the proclamation from the League of Women Voters. And what I will do is read the proclamation, and then I'll hand it over to Susan and Heather. If there's any comments you would like to share, and then I'll open it up to the rest of the council. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the bold, courageous, and powerful women who fought for the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which was ratified on August 18th, 1920, deserve special celebration by the city of Richfield, especially on the 100th anniversary of its ratification. And whereas Minnesota was the 15th state to ratify the 19th Amendment on September 8th, 1919, and whereas the fact that today women are an active, are active in local, state, and federal government and are running for office in unprecedented numbers reminds us that we all follow in the footsteps of these resolute American suffragists. And whereas the United States of America has yet to ratify the Equal Rights Amendment, originally written by suffragette Alice Paul in 1923, showing that there remains more progress to be had. And whereas it is of importance to acknowledge, um, oh, to acknowledge that women of color rallied against white suff, uh, alongside, excuse me, women of color rallied alongside white suffragettes, many women of color remain disenfranchised by racist policies until the mid to late 20th century. Whereas we must look to our history to help us understand the struggles around voting rights and voter suppression in the United States today. And whereas the city of Richfield Council and staff identified celebrating diversity and being equitable as core values, recognizing that our diverse culture is one of our greatest strengths and assets. And whereas the Richfield Human Rights Commission supported the proclamation at its last meeting and recommend that the Richfield City Council do the same. Now, therefore, I, Maria Reagan Gonzalez, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2020 as honoring the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment in the city of Richfield and call on all the people of Richfield to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies and contribute and continue to support voting rights throughout the year. So, thank you so much, Susan and Heather, for being here. I will just kick it over to you if there's anything you would like to say on behalf of the League of Women Voters. Really appreciate you being here with us tonight.
So I am here on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, and we're just so happy that the council has approved this. So thank you guys so much for getting this on the agenda for August. I'm going to let Sue have most of the talking time, but in particular, I just want to say how important this is, especially as we acknowledge that there's more progress to be made as we march toward our November election. And I'm really excited about work that's happening in our city to make sure everybody has an opportunity to vote. So, thank you. And Sue, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you so much, and I, I want to thank the Human Rights Commission for doing this and also the City Council for approving it. Um, you know, this is the 100th anniversary, and it's a really important date, not only for the suffrage, but also for the League of Women Voters. And we had several events planned this summer, so to have something like this is just really means a lot. It meant, means a lot to the board. And one other thing that really means a lot to us is that all five of our council members are either members or friends of the League. And so that shows us that the League and voting rights for women are just really important things. I really appreciate a couple of things in that proclamation. And one is identifying and noting about women of color. Women of color were instrumental in getting this vote for women. But as it, as the proclamation says, they were disenfranchised more than once. And I think now is the time we need to recognize their contributions and what we can do to keep that history alive and so that they can be recognized. The other thing that I'm really happy to hear is about Alice Paul. She's a name that is very, very important in the whole suffrage movement. And if anybody reads anything about her, she took a lot of training from the, her, um, women in England when they were fighting for their suffrage. And, um, she's the one that led herself to the White House gates. She's the one that was forced to do it. But she worked really hard and she, she suffered for this privilege. And she, um, is someone that I think we really have to, we really owe a lot to because she organized, organized, organized. But again, thank you so much for recognizing this. This is really important to all of us, men and women. And, uh, I just really want to thank everybody for giving us this little, this proclamation because we were going to be grand marshals in the parade. We were going to have a big display at City Hall. And, uh, oh, I need to mention Katie's a League of Women Voters, the city manager. So, you know, it's well represented up there, so, um, in the administrative part of the, of the, of the council and the city. So anyway, again, thank you so much, and all of us in the League are really appreciative for this recognition for women's suffrage because it's, it's, August 26th is when the day that it was finally voted on. And I always say that my daughters, my twin daughters, had the good sense to be born on August 26th. They were born on the 60th anniversary of the, and they're gonna be 40, unfortunately. But it's just, um, it's a big day, August 26th, and that's kind of the, the big day. So, and again, thank you.
Thank you so much, Susan and Heather, for joining us and receiving the proclamation. I'm sure there's plenty of council members who'd like to say a few words. Is anybody interested in sharing anything? Council member Garcia. Is she still? There she is.
Yeah, I'm still here. Okay, no, I just wanted, uh, thanks to the Human Rights Commission and to Susan Rosenberg. They really worked hard, and I appreciate it. But I also wanted to mention that the suffragettes, when, when they were fighting for the right to vote, they were arm-in-arm also fighting with, uh, fighting with African-Americans for that same right to vote. And so that's, that's how, that's the beauty of things, is that the women championed the African-American and vice versa. So that was beautiful. I just want to mention some women that, um, that were very instrumental in, in, uh, I think I can speak for Mary. I want to mention first Gertrude Ulrich, who was kind of known as Miss Richfield, Mrs. Richfield. I want to mention Emily Day. I want to mention Joan Helberger. Laura Estasantas, who was the founder of BEAK. And we still have with us the great Margaret Sevier. And these women are leaders, they're community builders, they're heroes, and they're wonderful. And, and we really, we're, we're lucky to learn from them and be, and be with them. And I appreciate, um, and I appreciate all of them.
Thank you so much, council member Garcia. Any other comments from council members? Council member Whelan.
Um, I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for, for carrying on this legacy that when I, when I first started getting involved in local politics, uh, the League of Women Voters was like, who I heard about, the name. I'm newer to Richfield, but they have, you have such a long history of building up local civic leaders. Um, and that's amazing. And anytime I hear someone ask the question, oh, can we get, can we work on getting blank group, like, registered to vote? That the League of Women Voters is always the group, whether it's women or not, that is like, yes, we will help make that happen and make sure that people can get more engaged. So, thank you, Susan, for your part in that and to all of the many, many other people who've been part of that legacy. Um, we really appreciate you, and Richfield has, um, a lot to thank you for. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Supple.
Well, I'd like to thank the Human Rights Commission and the League of Women Voters. Um, I think one of the best ways we can celebrate this is by voting tomorrow if we haven't already voted since there's an election. And, um, as was stated, it's like, we're like standing on the shoulders of generations that came before us, whether it was Soljenner Truth, or Susan B. Anthony, or Alice Paul, people that have fought and fought and fought, and then the people that Edwina mentioned here in Richfield that have been civic leaders. Um, I was talking to some Girl Scouts a couple of months back, and one of the things I pointed out that is if someone lived in the north central part of Richfield, all of their representatives until they got all the way up to like the governor's level were women. So it'd be council member Garcia, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, um, their county commissioners Debbie Gortel. If you look at the state level, they would have Senator Patricia Torres Ray and Representative Jean Wagenius in that district. And then you keep going up, and you have Senator Tina Smith and Senator, um, Amy Klobuchar and Representative Ilhan Omar. So it's like from local all the way up through the state and into some of the federal, it was a lot of strong women leaders. And I thought that was really kind of a cool thing. And it's just great to celebrate all that and all the mentorship that they have done and all the leadership that they've done. Um, I was gonna mention it in hats off to hometown hits, but I can bring it up now. The Richfield Historical Society is gonna have a celebration called Rightfully Hers on August 22nd. And that afternoon, they're gonna have a big display, and they're also gonna have some memorabilia from, from local people as well as things from the National Archives. So watch for announcements on that, but that's another good way to celebrate. Thank you.
Council member Troutman. Oh, sounds like you're on mute still.
It's not working. Should be able to do it now.
Hello?
I think we got it.
Yep, we can hear.
Hey. Sorry, folks, I'm at an undisclosed location with questionable internet. But I, but what I, what I wanted to say is that it seems incomprehensible now to imagine a political world where we didn't have women leading. Um, but 100 years ago, it seemed incomprehensible to so many people that women would lead. And as hard as it is to understand that, um, it's a recognition that we still have, we still have distances to travel, but incredible progress that our, our country's made. Um, and I just, I appreciate being a member of the League of Women Voters and their passion for not just women voting, but for everybody to vote. And, um, and when we think about voting rights, it's not just an issue in other states. We still have fights that we're fighting here in Minnesota. Um, and, um, really, we're really proud to be, to be a member of the League and appreciate, uh, the, the Human Rights Commission and the League of Women Vote, uh, Voters recognizing uh, this, this important year, uh, but also just continuing on in that work. So it's a, it's a privilege to be a part of that.
Great, thank you.
And I'd like to just invite everybody, if you're not a member of the League or a friend of the League of Women Voters, to please, please become a member. Um, the League of Women Voters, whether it's in Richfield or any other community, is one of the most important organizations in terms of being a backbone for civic engagement, connecting, and making a difference. So, um, I'd just like to ask folks, it's such an amazing organization regardless of where you call home, and ask people to please join. And lastly, I would say, I don't think I would be in office today if it was not for the mentorship and the leadership of the Richfield League of Women Voters. Um, and when I think about the history of our city and our community, the first people I think of are the powerful, amazing women from the League of Women Voters that some of them I never got to meet, and many of them are here with us today, like Susan, like Edwina, like Mary, like Debbie, um, who have just been exceptional mentors to me in my journey in leadership and who really encouraged me, um, to think as myself as, in, uh, as a leader in a way that I never had before. And I'm forever indebted to, to our Richfield League of Women Voters. So I encourage folks to please grow our Women Voters. They do amazing things like signing up our youth and registering our youth to vote. They, um, put on amazing forums with our candidates, our local candidates, our state-level candidates, so that community members are very educated on who they're voting for and why. And they also do amazing research on issues that matter most to us, like organized trash hauling and other things that are of importance in our community, and they present that information in a nonpartisan way so that residents are informed and can step into their leadership as well. So, thank you so much for being here with us tonight. Thank you, Heather, for representing the Human Rights Commission. Um, and we wish that we could celebrate this in person, but we aren't. So we do still have the opportunity to go to the Historical Society event. Thank you for coming.
Well, maybe 2021 will be 101.
Absolutely.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Great. The next item in our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Council member Whelan, so moved.
Council member Supple, second.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved by council member Whelan and seconded by council member Supple. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Council member Supple.
Aye.
Council member Troutman.
Aye.
Council member Garcia.
Aye.
Council member Whelan.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar with city manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. Item A, consider a resolution adopting affordable and life cycle housing goals for 2021 to 2030 and re-enrolling in the livable community program. Item B, consider a resolution authorizing the encroachment agreement between the city of Richfield and Partnership Academy, located at 6500 Nicolet Avenue South, allowing Partnership Academy to install and maintain sport courts, playground equipment, and other allowed improvements within the city's existing utility easement. Item C, consider the adoption of a resolution approving the final Richfield 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Item D, consider the approval of the first reading of an ordinance that includes requirements for all persons using designated off-leash areas in the city of Richfield's parks and schedule a public hearing and second reading, September 8th, 2020. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar tonight.
Council member Supple, I will move approval of the consent calendar.
I will second Garcia.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been moved by council member Supple and seconded by council member Garcia. Are there any council questions or comments on the consent calendar? Council member Whelan.
I just wanted to give a shout out to our, our rec staff, uh, working on the, the dog park. I know people have been waiting for that for a long time. I'm excited. It's, um, we don't even have a dog, but it's right by my house, and I'm excited for it. So, um, glad to see that's moving ahead. I know it got delayed with, with the pandemic that we didn't want people congregating there, but, um, just really excited about it. And thank you for everyone who's been, um, working on all the little details like this to make it possible.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the consent calendar? Great. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take a roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Council member Supple.
Aye.
Council member Troutman. Council member Garcia.
Aye.
Council member Whelan.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been moved. The next item goes to council member Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item is the first reading of an ordinance establishing a prevailing wage policy for city-funded capital projects with estimated costs of $300,000 or more. The city of Richfield is currently required to pay or require contractors to pay a prevailing wage for projects that are funded with state and federal revenue. Richfield City Council provided direction at a work session on February 11th of 2020 to expand the prevailing wage requirements to city-funded capital projects to better support the city of Richfield's economy and enhance the local standard of living. The council also supported staff's proposal to add contractual provisions to future development agreements to ensure compliance with labor laws and to display posters that provide support to human trafficking victims at every project worksite. It is in the public's best interest that developments and buildings constructed with financial assistance from the city be constructed and maintained by the best means and highest quality of labor reasonably available, and that persons working on the buildings and developments be compensated according to the real value of the services they perform, and that wages of laborers, workers, and mechanics on developments and buildings financially assisted by public funds be comparable to wages paid for similar work in the community as a whole. Currently, fair wages contractual provisions are part of an upcoming contract for private development with 6345 Partners LLC, which will include provisions such as, "Construction and ongoing operation of the project must comply with all local, state, and federal labor laws." "The certificate of completion will be provided upon evidence that all contractors, subcontractors, and laborers have been paid." "If the developer fails to comply with labor laws, they will be in default of the contract. And if they are in default, the HRA can delay issuance of the tax increment, reduce the amount of the TIF by 20%, or terminate the contract." "Additionally, contractors will be asked to display information to bring awareness to labor trafficking practices on work sites with a job valuation exceeding a specified threshold to be determined." Um, before I pass it to staff, I just want to say, um, we have had some amazing partners in this work from several area unions and really want to lift up their work, uh, finding cases where these labor laws are not being followed, where people are being trafficked for their labor, exploited, um, that we unfortunately had an incident where, um, a known labor trafficker was found on one of our sites in Richfield. So this is a, um, a close to home issue, but appreciate the, the work that our staff have been doing to bring this together. And I'm excited that we're, we're getting to, to vote on it today. Um, I will pass it over. Does staff have anything to add to the report?
I don't have anything further, council member.
Okay, well, thank you. Then I will move to approve the first reading of an ordinance establishing a prevailing wage policy for city-funded projects with estimated costs of $300,000 or more.
Council member Supple, I'll second that.
Thank you. The motion has been made by council member Whelan and seconded by council member Supple. Are there any, um, council comments or questions? Council member Supple.
Um, I just want to say that I'm really thrilled that we are voting on this tonight because it's something that's so, so important, and people should get a fair wage for the work that they're doing. And I'm happy that we're gonna be helping to push that forward, and I hope we continue to work for fair labor practices.
Thank you, council member Supple. Other comments or questions on this from council members? Council member Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just agree, and I wanna, I wanna thank our staff, and I do want to thank our, our local unions, um, uh, for, for advocating and, and, um, and really helping, helping us and our staff as we take the, as we take the lead here, um, not just for, for prevailing wages, but I really wanna, I want to talk about both the prevailing, the prevailing wage and providing living wages for everybody that, uh, that contracts with the, with the city, but also for folks who, who have either been trafficked or been the victim of wage theft. And, um, like council member Whelan pointed out, we had folks engaging in that practice even here in Richfield. And what it is, uh, for so many people that have felt uncertainty in these last months and have, you know, even on a temporary basis, had to be unemployed, you know, what it is to, to work and to work and then not be paid at all. And then have your, have your wages stolen, or even have, uh, your, your liberty and your safety put at risk uh, while you're, while you're working is, is unconscionable. And, uh, and I'm so grateful for our staff for, for both, uh, creating livable and prevailing wages for folks that contract and partner with the city, but also making sure that, um, while we know practices like that go on, we really give, um, we, we give, uh, staff and, um, and the state tool to, to make sure that those practices, uh, are not taken advantage of. to make sure that those practices are not taken advantage of in Richfield. So thank you, especially the staff, especially the Director Stark's office. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Wayland?
A clarification. I know I had talked about this with City Manager Rodriguez, but just wanted to share with everyone. Could you say a bit more? I know we, the $300,000 limit is a bit higher than some other cities have, but that our reason for that is so that we can really enforce it in every instance and that I believe we're open then to reviewing after we have some of these projects and see how the enforcement goes and revisiting that dollar amount. Can you say a bit more about kind of what the timeline for that might be or process?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. And I also want to extend thanks to Executive Anna Martinez-Govina because she also shepherded this project through and did a lot of the research and I really, really appreciate that. So we did pick 300,000 as the threshold because some of the communities that had picked a lower threshold were not enforcing it and we want to be able to enforce it. So we're going to do this for a year. We're going to reassess in a year. One of the things we can't easily quantify is because we're not going to contract twice. We're not going to contract with prevailing wages and not with prevailing wages. So it's hard to know if insisting on prevailing wages is going to increase the contracts. But what we will know is if we're not getting as many bids. So that's something that we'll look at. We'll also have a better idea of how much it costs to do the enforcement. So we'll report back in a year's time on what we found.
Okay, thank you. That's, I was actually going to ask about check back in in a year. So that sounds great.
Any other comments from council members? I would just like to echo the thanks to our staff, Analyst Martinez-Govina, to Director Stark and his community development team, the entire team, to City Manager Rodriguez and everybody on the staff helped move this work forward. Also, like the council members had shared, our partners in our local unions and all of the workers who have been working on the front lines of this work, experiencing, unfortunately, experiencing these issues. It has been a community-wide effort to move this forward. I'm really proud that we're doing this and this is another issue that at the city of Richfield we have been talking about for years and it feels really great to be taking action on it. So thank you to everybody who helped make it happen. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take a roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple? Councilmember Troutman? I think we lost, we might have lost Councilmember Troutman. So I'll come back to him. Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The item has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is to consider an ordinance amending regulations pertaining to the installation of small wireless facilities and wireless support structures in the right-of-way and a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance. So in 2017, the Minnesota Legislature amended state law to expressly allow the installation of small wireless facilities and wireless support structures in the right-of-way. This right is subject to local governmental authority to manage right-of-way permitting, but the city's authority to deny permits in the right-of-way is very limited. Cities are permitted to make such facilities or structures a conditional use in right-of-ways located in areas zoned for single-family residential use. And given that cities are not permitted to adopt a moratorium in 2017 to study other potential regulations, the city attorney recommended that the city council do this. So since the adoption of the regulation two years ago, staff has continued to study potential aesthetic and spacing guidelines for all small wireless facilities. At a May 26 work session, staff presented a set of regulations to the city council. Based on feedback at this work session, the minimum separation between its facilities has been increased from 150 feet to 300 feet and language limiting the size of safety signs has been eliminated. These regulations would apply to installations in right-of-way adjacent to all zoning districts. Staff also recommended to the council on May 26 that the requirements for a conditional use permit, or CUP, in the single-family residential areas be removed. The CUP process invites the public to participate in the consideration of an application that in this case, the city has little and no authority to deny. Participants have frequently expressed health concerns related to radio frequency electromagnetic fields. However, the established guidelines for human exposures to those RFEMs are set by the Federal Communications Commission and the city has no authority to deny a request that meets those requirements. With the adoption of aesthetic and spacing requirements that will apply to all installations, the CUP process becomes one that invites public content but offers no legitimate opportunity for influence. This type of process can erode public trust and is frustrating and inefficient for all involved. The city was supportive, excuse me, the council was supportive of this recommendation. A public hearing was held by the Planning Commission on June 22 to consider the proposed amendment to remove the CUP requirement from the zoning code. And after a lengthy debate related to the usefulness of the CUP in this process, the commission recommended approval. Access to reliable telecommunications network is important for the residents of Richfield. The proposed regulations are intended to reasonably regulate the aesthetic impacts that this improved connectivity and availability will create. So with that, I'll turn it over to the staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. I'm Melissa Pellman, the Assistant Director of Community Development. I'll just add that since you considered this first reading, we did receive a letter from an attorney's office representing Verizon Wireless. We reviewed the ordinance based on those comments and had our attorney take a look at those. There were some comments. Our attorney's office didn't feel that it was necessary legally to make any changes. However, we did clarify some language to make sure that it's understood that these requirements will apply to the poles that antennas will be attached to rather than to the antennas themselves. And no further changes were made to the ordinance. So this is substantially similar to what you saw a couple weeks ago.
Madam Mayor, do you want to take this as two motions or one?
I will ask our city attorney if we, can we take them as one or do we have to do it as two?
Hi, Council and Madam Mayor. This is Dave Anderson from Kennedy and Graven. I am covering for Mary, teaching the city attorney tonight. Generally speaking, when there is a resolution for summary publication which requires a heightened voting requirement, I suggest that you take it as two motions, but I don't get the impression that this is a controversial issue and I assume that the summary publication that is, is not going to be an issue. So I think it's fine to take it as one motion. If for some reason the writing on the wall is that we need to do it as two motions, we can do that. But I'm comfortable doing it as just one motion, especially for the sake of efficiency this evening.
Okay, then. This is Councilmember Supple. I will move to approve a second reading of an ordinance related to the installation of small wireless facilities and wireless support structures in the right-of-way and to approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance related to the installation of small wireless facilities and wireless. And should it be wireless support structures?
Yes, it should be. It looks like that wording was cut off there. It should be wireless support structures in the right-of-way.
Okay. Then that's what I'm moving.
Councilmember Troutman, I would second that.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Any questions or comments from council members on this item? Nope? All right. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple? Councilmember Troutman? Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The item has been approved. The next item will go to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I will see how far I can get on this item. If I run out of breath, I may have to yield to staff to continue it. But this is a consideration of the approval of an amendment to a conditional use permit to allow building renovations and site improvements at Hope Presbyterian Church, 7132 Portland Avenue. Hope Presbyterian Church is requesting approval of an amendment to a conditional use permit in order to make renovations to their building and property. The site is located in a single-family residential zoning district. The church and affiliated programming are conditionally allowed uses. The renovations include removal and replacement of the eastern portion of the existing buildings on the north side of the property. The new addition will be set back further from Portland Avenue and will include a new and more permanent entrance, a multipurpose room, and internal gathering spaces. The applicant is planning to renovate the lower level as well, including consolidating offices and updating the children's spaces. Materials will include brick to match the existing brick, stone and stucco, new metal roofing, and large glass windows. Will accent the building. Hope Church recently held an open house to discuss the project to which they invited neighbors that were within 1,000 feet of the property. The site will continue to meet the condition specific to a church used in the single-family residential zoning district and meets most general performance standards specified by the code. A description of conditional use permit requirements is attached. The one exception may be parking. Although the calculation of parking for a property such as a variety of uses and schedules exceed minimum allowable parking, the applicant is proposing to add additional parking spaces near the main entrance of the church on the Portland side of the building. There are several reasons to consider this and approve this. One is to provide more convenient parking for those attending services and thereby reduce the need to use a northern parking lot which is located off of a local street. Two, to allow for separate parking areas if church services are taking place at the same time as one of the several school day care programs that operate out of the southern or Fourth Avenue portion of the building. And three, to strategically plan for possible future redevelopment of the southern half of the property. Staff is recommending that the approval of this conditional use permit include two stipulations. One, that the southern undeveloped portion of the property be maintained as landscaping or grass. And two, that a comprehensive review of parking would be required prior to any future modifications to the parking lot south of the proposed limits of construction or any requests for development for the current vacant land. So this makes the staff requirements and approval of the attached resolution according to to the conditional use permit. So I'll turn it over to staff so that they can follow up.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. I think that sums it up nicely. I would just say that the issue with the parking on this particular site is unique. It's a very large site. It's oddly shaped. And for a number of years, frankly, the community development department and I know a number of council members have talked to the church about possibly including some housing on this site. It seems like a great place to further their mission in that way and to provide some additional multifamily housing. So the way that they're reorienting this parking lot does set it up to continue to look for that in the future. In addition, anyone who has gone to this church and used their facilities probably has recognized the need for additional parking near this main entrance. So I think that this reorientation and the addition of parking spaces on the north side with the condition that we'll keep looking at this as they evaluate their needs for the site in the future is a good move for the city council to make. And that's all. The applicant is here. If you have any questions for them, otherwise staff will stand for questions as well.
Looks like we don't have any questions from staff. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion that we approve the attached resolution for an amendment to a conditional use permit to allow building renovations at Hope Presbyterian Church, 7132 Portland Avenue.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Garcia and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Are there any comments or questions from council members on this item?
I just wanted to say that Hope Church has been, Presbyterian Church has been really good neighbors. And they've always worked with the community. They used to hold slobs and fishes. They used to have a school, a little school there, preschool. And I mean, they've done fantastic work and been very community-minded and I salute them for all their efforts.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Wayland?
Yeah, I was going to say something similar and I think, I mean, I know their Young Life programs are very popular and the Young Life volunteers do a lot to support our schools. And yeah, so I really appreciate that. I appreciate the context from our staff on the possibility of future development. And I do hope that the church continues to consider that. And I think there's obviously a lot of variables there, but that south area could be a great space for some housing or potentially other uses, but do hope that they keep that conversation open. And I'm, yeah, I'm comfortable with the parking situation as described. So thank you to Hope Church for the continued work you do and I look forward to that continued support for our community in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. And in the Star Tribune, a few months back, there was a story about Loaves and Fishes and the work that they do in an organization. But I was volunteering at the Loaves and Fishes at Hope Church that still is still operating now. So if there's folks, if community members that are interested, Hope Church still does operate their loaves and fishes. But it was just so great to connect with residents, to connect with volunteers. And as the rest of the council members have said, Hope Church provides so many connections and supports to our residents. I've gone there to vine and branches a handful of times with folks who unfortunately have lost, you know, their items or their home in fires in Richfield. And we've gone over there. Every single time, the staff has been so great and really helped outfit residents who are really in need with things for their home, with clothes. who are really in need with things for their home, with clothes and things like that. And, and I'd like to say, just in this process of re-envisioning and re-imagining the site, Hope continues to be a great partner and has really done a great job of keeping us updated, of talking to other community leaders, of having, having visioning sessions that are inclusive of the community of what could we do with the site? How could we reimagine it? And how could we continue to serve Richfield with our vision for the future? So thank you for your continued partnership. I mean, throughout time, but also with this project itself. All right, analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The item has been approved. The next item is the city manager's report. I'll pass the city manager, Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items tonight. As you all know, because we had a work session on it, staff have been busy tallying up our eligible expenses for the CARES grant. We got nearly, well, just over, rather, two point seven four five million dollars. And staff believe that given our current, what we've spent so far and what we expect to spend on our current mitigations, we have sufficient expenses to, to apply for all of that reimbursement. However, we still think it's important to do some further programs to assist the community. And we've got, we've got planned up to thirty-six percent of the CARES funding to, to direct to, you know, more direct community programs. It'll be rental and food assistance and also small business assistance and community testing. And then I also, I'm really excited to announce that we are finalizing a COVID nineteen dashboard. It will be Richfield specific and it'll have cases and unfortunately some deaths, but also with demographics and type of transmission and other data. And we should have that up by next week. And then my final announcement, and I'm going to ask for executive analyst Martinez-Govina to provide some more details, but we got a curveball from the federal government on the end date of the census. And so Blanca, if you could provide more details.
Yes, thank you, city manager Rodriguez. And as mentioned, it is quite a curveball. Originally, the census had been extended the deadline to October thirtieth for mitigations due to COVID nineteen. And now that has been changed to September thirtieth. So that is seven weeks from now, which really puts us in a very difficult situation as some of our numbers are still relatively low. And I just want to use an example in Richfield, which is track two forty-three, and that extends south from Seventy-second to four ninety-four corridor, and then from Sursees to Blue Star Memorial Highway. And if you think of that area, there are quite a few apartment complexes, which is in line with some of the traditionally undercounted communities in the census. So, so far right now, we have fifty-seven point three percent self-response. That is very low and that equals to around twelve hundred households that have not responded to the census. Again, we don't know if, if the, the folks that are going to be, the nomigators that are going to be going out to the field starting next week are going to be able to get that many households, but we are working on a very tight schedule. So I am asking for folks to please volunteer. We have many ways that you can volunteer. Even if you can call your neighbor, if you can make sure that your family has filled out the census, or if you want to do a little bit more and volunteer with us at the city, we are partnering with the Demographer's Office to do calls, to do some phone banks, but also partnering with some local organizations. And finally, we're also partnering with money and we've had money from the Minneapolis Foundation to do some of this outreach. And again, it is expected that at this point, or in ten households in the United States have not responded to the census. So that is very alarming and it's something that is crucial for our community because we can lose up to two hundred and twenty million dollars in funding for the next ten years. So if you want to volunteer, my phone number is six one two eight six one nine seven zero one. Again, that's six one two eight six one nine seven zero one. My email is bmgovina@richfieldmn.gov. So if there are any questions, yeah, please let me know. But this is, this is, again, we weren't expecting this, this curveball. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for all the efforts you've been making on the census. I recently learned that you don't have to have like the original mailer with the number on it because I think some people thought, oh, I can't do it. I lost that paper. But if you go to my twenty twenty census.gov and you just put in your address, you can respond to the census. So please don't worry about the fact if you lost the paper, you can still just go online and do it. So I just wanted to point that out because I don't want to have any roadblocks in front of people filling out the census.
Yes, that is correct. As councilmember Supple stated, the census obviously works address. That's the identifier. So as long as you know your address, you should be set to go. So it's as simple as that.
No, I, I, Mayor. Mayor.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, I just, I just also wanted to thank Blanca for, for all of her efforts. I think, I think she's done really a super job of leading this and working on it. And it's been, it's been almost like another full-time job for her. And, and she's right, we need to do every single thing we can do to increase our numbers because it means money, it means representation, and it means that, you know, we will, we will all be represented regardless of of where we are in the city. So please, please follow those recommendations from, from Blanca. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Garcia. Any other comments or questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we very rarely, you know, and we have a great tradition of avoiding partisan comments. But I just have to say, I'm so disappointed at the extraordinary effort at a federal level our government has taken to undercount communities. And they tried to do this and they lost to the courts. And it's not that the pandemic has gotten better, but it, it just feels nakedly partisan to move up this deadline. And with that being said, it's not partisan. It's a policy decision that I think is, is lamentable at any political, from any political perspective. But, but for every community member, this is all of us pulling together to make sure we're all counted. And so if you have, if you have an extra couple hours and you can lend a hand, you're helping, you're helping each, we're only helping each other. And this is on, on lots of levels. We really need to do that as a community. And like all my colleagues have said, Blanca Govina, thank you so much for your, your leadership and rallying everybody and communicating so clearly and urgently on so many levels and just, just seeing so much success even under extraordinary circumstances with, with COVID and with shenanigans. We're grateful for your leadership.
Thank you, councilmember Troutman. I'd just like to thank the praise for analyst Martinez-Govina as well. She does so many things at the city and, and she's leading the census work. She's co-leading the equity work. She helped lead the prevailing wage work. And that's just a little bit of, of all the things that she's leading, especially in a community like Richfield that is so diverse. And to have a staff like analyst Martinez-Govina, who is community first and community oriented and very strategic, a big systems thinker, we are really benefiting in Richfield. So thank you, Blanca, for your work. We appreciate you so much. We're very, very, very lucky to have you in our community. And I know the community members that I talk to that have worked with you also say the same things to me. So I want to pass that on to our community and to all those residents who have been emailing us and contacting us and saying, how can we get involved and make a difference to advance racial equity? How can we get involved to make a better Richfield? Please volunteer as soon as possible and enroll all of your friends to get our neighbors counted for the census. This is a huge opportunity and potential loss for us. Thank you, city manager Rodriguez. Any other items on your report?
Well, that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will pass claims and payroll to councilmember Garcia and her puppies.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm outside and they're out here too. So you know, I, I can't do it without their help. Survive, that is. But anyway, I will move claims and payroll, Mayor.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved by councilmember Garcia and seconded by councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Troutman. I believe you are on mute, councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. The next item is hats off to hometown heads. I will start with councilmember Garcia.
But I didn't really have anything prepared, but I will say one thing, you know, this, this COVID virus and, and the economy and the election happening and the whole works, hats off to people who really, really are doing their best to involve and embrace other community members that are really hurting from, from Corona nineteen. It is just, it's, it's very, it's a very, very sad time for us in this country. I went to my doctor's today and he said, we're going to get these hard times over with and then we'll even, we'll even, you know, be able to shake hands again. And I said, I don't know. If I don't get a hug, I may not want to shake hands. And he said, you got that right. But that's what, that's coronavirus is, you know, the COVID nineteen has really, I think, brought us together in, in many ways. I think we've shown a lot of kindness to each other, a lot of respect to each other. And, and I think Richfield citizens are the best. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Troutman.
Mayor, I just wanted to give a, a quick shout out and lift up our Parks and Rec staff. And I know we've talked about them a couple of times this summer, but is just reminded several times this week of just how, how extraordinary they are in making Richfield an incredible community in the midst of this pandemic. Stay able to go to the farmer's market and appreciate so much what they've done to, to preserve that little part of our normal lives. And, and they've made parks and rec activities available. My son went to a, an outdoor survival camp in Woodlake Nature Center this week. And, and even, even, even today, even this afternoon, they, they had to deal with, with problems of a, of a porta potty or a biff that they made available because of the pandemic, but then got flooded out. And they were on that, on top of that right away. So just at every, at every level, I know lots of park departments in our city have had to flex. But that's one that we just, just touched, touched my family, touched our lives a lot this week. So I want to say thank you and hats off to Director Markle and, and the whole Parks and Rec staff.
Thank you, councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. One big one that, actually a couple of things that have just been mentioned, so I'll go quick. Again, just make sure to vote. Tomorrow is the primary. You can vote in person. If you got an absentee ballot, you can still put that in the mail tomorrow as long as it's postmarked by tomorrow. You can, if you've got an absentee ballot and you don't want to take chances, you can still go vote in person. So just make sure to vote, make your voice heard. And then obviously there's, there's the general coming up too, so be prepared for that. And thank you to everyone who's engaging around, around the election. And then I was going to mention the census, which we've mentioned already. And then actually, my third one is a question as much as it is an announcement. I believe today was going to be the day for the ICE arena. Is it up and running? Or do we have a, a new deadline for that? City manager Rodriguez?
You know what, councilmember Wayland? I don't know. I'm sorry. I can get back to you on that.
Okay. I know it is soon. If it wasn't today, we will have ICE arena back up and running soon. Obviously with some COVID precautions, but just a shout out to all of the staff there. Obviously hired construction people to be doing the, the major work, but the staff there have done a lot of extra help cleaning up, getting things ready. So thank you to them and we're excited to, to see the new, the new arena.
Thank you, councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Supple.
Madam Mayor, I want to do a shout out to all of the Richfield Public School staff that has been delivering meals. So since they started doing the meal delivery in March, they've delivered two hundred fifty thousand meals to the youth in Richfield. And we really appreciate that. And they delivered through the end of July. And so now there's a little bit of a break going on. So if your family is looking for meals, you can go to loaves and fishes. You can also head over to get food from Veep. And so I just want to put those two resources out there. There's also an app you can go to that's HTTP colon backslash backslash, and it's called Free Meals for Kids MN.org. So you can look that up again. It's Free Meals for Kids MN.org. So those are ways that you can help your family if you're looking for food in the month of August. And finally, just another reminder about the celebration at the Richfield Historical Society on Saturday, August twenty-second called Rightfully Hers. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Supple. I would like to say thank you to two groups of folks today. Thank you to all of our city staff and our department heads and our city leadership for their tremendous work in tackling such a tough budget year and taking on the CARES federal funding and just trying to balance so many things for the future of our community. It takes a lot of work and when there's so many variables that can change, it's just tremendous, tremendously difficult. And our staff have been doing such an exceptional job in continuing to lead throughout the COVID pandemic, but then also doing so in a way that we're doing the best we can to prepare for our future financially. So thank you to our staff for that. We had a great work session today. It took a lot of preparation and we had a great discussion on the council. And then I would like to just say thank you to, I'm going to move, I have my neighbor mowing his lawn. It's a little loud. Okay. I'd also like to say thank you to superintendent Steve Unowski and school board chair Crystal Brackey and all of Steve's leadership team. I was invited to speak to his leadership team meeting, the first meeting back of the school year. And it was just great to hear the passion, the values of each of his direct reports and our principals, our vice principals, all the people servicing the schools. And just like the city staff have such a tremendous undertaking right now, so do our schools and their commitment and dedication to keeping our kids safe and healthy and being really creative is very clear. And I was very inspired by the focus And I was very inspired by the focus of this year for them. The focus is COVID-19 and advancing racial justice. And you could just really hear how strongly they were committed to advancing those two things and how they're inextricably linked in that advancing racial justice and addressing COVID in our schools means doing that in partnership with the city and with the community. So I just left feeling extremely inspired to have such great colleagues and partners in our school district. All right, and with that, we have nothing else on our agenda, so I will adjourn our meeting. Good night, everyone, and we'll talk to you soon.